Again, we don't know for sure. And we don't know for sure how.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the regular Administrative Committee meeting on February 8th of 2016. My name is Jim Boland. To my right is Dan Carskellin. My left is John Weber. I guess we'll start with the... Oh, and there's Gary Readners here, too, as well. Yeah. Thanks for coming, Gary.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
First item on our agenda today is selection of the committee chair and vice chair. John?
I would move that we elect Jim Boland as the committee chair and Dan Carskellin as the vice chair.
I don't want to sound self-serving, but I'll second that.
Any opposition to this?
I close all nominations.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and vote on that. It seems to be unanimous. There were no nays. So that's how it's going to be.
That will be. It's not railroad.
I tell you, some guys are just smooth, aren't they?
It's become a... Apparently, it's become a tradition. The second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from October 12th and October 19th. About entertain a motion for... We'll do those separately. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the Administrative Committee from October 12th.
I move that we approve those minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Subitem B, minutes of November 9th, 2015.
I would move to approve the November 9th minutes.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on that? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now down to the meat of the agenda here. Item three is the Idaho VIBA group proposal. And Gary's going to present that. And I'm told that VIBA stands for Very Excellent Benefits Account or something like that.
Thank you for introducing the Voluntary Employee Benefit Account Program. As I indicated, we have Chad Murray from JH Benefits in Coeur d'Alene who has a proposal to bring before the council today. The VIBA program that we have currently for the city employees is about nine years old, I believe. It began as a result of a couple of things. One, there was an increase in the deductible for the employ... Excuse me. Employee health insurance from $100, I believe, to $250, $300. At that time, there was also a reimbursement from the health insurance carrier... Excuse me. That would be not health insurance, workman's compensation. Also, a reimbursement to the city at that time. So... Excuse me. Not used to talking, I guess. At any rate, I think I'm ready to go again. At that time, the city's set up a voluntary employee benefit account, which essentially is the city putting in funds for the employees' benefit of pre-tax dollars that the employees can then use. Excuse me. Do we take a recess?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess while... So Gary won't choke to death. Okay, we're going to reconvene the Administrative Committee meeting now that Mr. Readner's back in full commission and go on with the discussion of the VIBA program.
Well, thank you. I apologize for the delay. Again, to rehash a little bit, the voluntary employee benefit account was set up as a vehicle for the city to grant employees pre-tax dollars that they could put in these accounts, which they could then use for health-related expenses. And it was to help offset the cost of the increased deductible, as well as some changes that were made to the prescription program, which increased the employees' responsibility for prescription medication. Over the years, it started off at $500 for the first year and then has been funded at $250 per employee since that time. The benefit of the VIBA is that if employees, they can choose in any one year to use their benefit in that year, and some employees choose to do that, or you can also allow those funds to accumulate, and then after you retire, you can take them out again for employee-related... Or, excuse me, health-related expenses after retirement. So a lot of people use that as a bridge to continue their COBRA health insurance payments, so on and so forth. So this program, when we started off, there was no firm in the state of Idaho that administered VIBA programs. So we were forced to look outside the state. Leslie Moss was our human resources director at that time. We kind of followed the model of the Post Falls VIBA program, which utilized, I believe it's called Gallagher &amp; Associates out of Washington, to manage and administer our VIBA program. And there was nobody in the state of Idaho who was doing that at the time. Since that time, and as I said, that's been about eight or nine years, since that time, a group out of Coeur d'Alene, JH Benefits, which is Chad Murray and his partners, who I'm sure he'll talk about in a few moments, decided that they were interested in starting a group, an Idaho group, that could manage those VIBA accounts from an Idaho perspective. So Chad's here to give a presentation today on that. It does involve, I think what you're going to hear today, is an offer to have the city help establish that group, requiring an intergovernmental agreement and cooperation among a certain amount of governments to get this thing started, similar to the way that the ICRA program started back in the mid-'80s. So, for liability insurance. So with that, I'll introduce Chad. Come ahead if you like.
Yep. I printed these out, but we may not use until later.
Okay, perfect. Nope, that's fine. Do you want to speak from up there or down here?
Sure. Yep. I'll... Do you want me to turn on a...
Yeah.
Turn that on so we can... He showed me how to. I remembered how to do it, yeah.
I know what he's doing.
You guys want me to stand back there?
Well, either way, you need to talk into a microphone.
Be in a mic, okay.
Yeah, he knows how to run that thing.
So Gary, you want me just to take it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And just to be transparent, so JH Benefits... So I'm part of Helbling Benefits Consulting, which is the firm that the city uses to broker their benefits. And so I work in that capacity with the city. But JH Benefits was formed separately to kind of keep these things separate. And I'll kind of explain a little bit of that relationship as we go a little bit. So real quick, I'm just going to give the background on the group, and then a brief explanation of JH Benefits, some of the key components to consider, and then a general outline of the trustees' responsibilities, because that's really what we're asking for, is the city to have a seat on the board trustees as we develop this thing. And then the initial IVG trustees that have committed already, and then talk a little bit about the trusted... Or the trustee professional advisors that we've already selected so far, and then a quick timeline moving forward. So... But real quick, so Gary mentioned that, you know, the city's been part of the, what I call, the Washington VIBA. They're called HRA VIBA Group. And it's been around for probably 30 years. So there's a lot of public entities in the state of Washington that are part of this. And one note is, you can only be a taxing... You can only be a public entity to be a part of the VIBA. There's special IRS code that allows public entities to participate in this program. And so we're only talking about groups that are taxing districts. So for example, even up in Coeur d'Alene, our local hospital is actually technically a taxing district, even though they don't tax. So they can participate in the VIBA. But there's several Idaho employers that are participating in the Washington VIBA. And a lot of the things that we've heard is, there's no Idaho control. So there's no Idaho member that sits on the Board of Trustees in Washington. The Board of Trustees for the Washington VIBA is made up of about six public entities in Washington, and I actually think they're all on the west side of the state. And so I've heard from other folks that participate in the VIBA from Idaho that they want to have a seat at the board, haven't had that opportunity. They want more transparency with the trust, because right now, you participate in this, and there's individual employee accounts that they can manage their money. But as far as the costs that the trust is paying for their professional services, any kind of reporting, it's really hard to get any kind of reporting out of their... On your own individual contributions in there. So we're hoping to provide a lot more transparency when it comes to cost and reporting, more flexibility. So some of the things that work for the Washington plan may not work for Idaho public entities. And that one of the things we want to do is have this... Have the board be made up of Idaho trustees so that they can, you know, make decisions for Idaho employees. And we want to offer a better member experience. And it's not that the Washington VIBA is bad. They've made some changes over the last few years that have been pretty disruptive to the member, not necessarily to administratively for the city. And we want to have more involvement in how they're choosing who gets to administer those claims. So this is just a little bit of background on why this came about. And Jim Hammonds, who actually is the current acting city manager in Coeur d'Alene, he has wanted to do this for the last three or four years. And he's had some experience with the Post Falls VIBA. And he wasn't able to get it up off the ground himself. So he approached our firm and me to help him get it up off the ground. And I'll kind of explain a little bit about JH Benefits in just a second. But this Idaho VIBA is going to be made up of all public entities in the state of Idaho and controlled by those entities. And all the expertise is going to be from the state of Idaho. So any... And those things are going to be decided by the board of trustees once they get up and going. But we're hoping that they'll use Idaho expertise to help this thing get up and going. It's going to be a 501(c)(9), which I won't go into a lot of detail what that is now. But that's exactly how the Washington Trust is set up. So our goal is to mimic exactly what the Idaho... Or the Washington Trust looks like, at least to start. And again, this is going to be an HRA plan. I'll skip through a couple of these. But the overall goal of what we're trying to do is to create an Idaho-controlled VIBA with Idaho professional expertise. So... And real quick about JH Benefits. And stop me if there's any questions as I go. I'll try to go through this a little quicker. But JH Benefits, like I said, was formed when Jim Hammonds approached me. Pretty clever, JH actually stands for Jim Hammonds. He had the organization beforehand. And we wanted to keep it separate from our consulting firm, just because we worked with our groups on, you know, doing the other things. We wanted to keep this separate. So if City of Moscow doesn't want to participate in this, it doesn't affect anything on the other relationship side. So Jim Hammonds is the managing partner, and myself, I'm the benefits consultant. So we have a lot of experience in how these things are set up and how they're administered. And so I also mentioned before that I'm also the owner of Helbling Benefits Consulting and the president. I just want to be transparent about that so that there's no confusion. And then Josh Sears, who is... He's also our attorney for Helbling Benefits Consulting. He is actually a partner in JH Benefits. And he's pretty crucial to this process, because he's working with the Department of Insurance right now and the IRS to get this thing set up and all the documentation going. And so once this trust gets up and going, he probably will not be the attorney going forward. The trust will hire its own attorney. So... And then Randy Oaks, who's a senior insurance advisor in... Up in Coeur d'Alene. But the key things that have to happen for this is having a joint powers agreement. And I think Gary mentioned that in order for public entities to do business together like this, they have to enter into a joint powers agreement. This agreement has been developed, and it's already completed, and it's at the Department of Insurance. The only thing that we need to put into this agreement is the founding members. And so once we get all the founding members, and right now, we have three that have committed, and we only need two to get the trust going, that this is something that you'll have to be a part of in order to be a founding member. There's a trust agreement. The trust agreement lines out all the IRS guidelines, the 501(c)(9) classifications. I won't go into a lot of detail there, but it's going to be completed, and it's at the Department of Insurance right now for approval. And I'll explain a little bit more about the approval process with the Department of Insurance. But wanted to kind of go through real quick just the documents and things that we've had to develop. HRA plan document, this is how the plan's going to be run. So it lines out everything, how the plan's going to run, how employees will... And things will be administered within the plan. Again, this is completed and at the Department of Insurance for approval. And then there's an IRS determination letter that has to happen. This is completed and submitted to the IRS. This is the part that probably takes the longest, and I won't go into a lot of detail on this part. But it's been completed and submitted. And so really, what I'm... What I'm here... What I met with Gary before was asking the city to be a founding member. And all that means, we're not asking for you to... You don't even have to put your employees' contributions and commitment into the trust at first. It just... We want somebody from the city to be on the board to help start making decisions and start moving this process along. Because we're moving this along as far as we can. And then, once the trustees are set up, all these... All this stuff is going to be decided by the board of trustees. But just a little bit of a quick outline of how that's going to be organized is, so we'll have quarterly meetings. The trustees will administer the trust and the plan in accordance with the terms and applicable law and shall be responsible for its operation. The trustees shall have all power necessary to carry out the provisions of the trust and the plan, and shall have the authority to enforce the plan for and on behalf of any all and interested parties. That's kind of legal mumbo jumbo. But the trustees, since they're going to have total control, but they're going to rely on their professional expertise. And I'll explain a little bit about that going forward. But the trustees shall administer the trust, including investment of the trust assets pursuant to the laws concerning fiduciary due to the state of Idaho and provisions of the trust agreement. If they do so in good faith, trustees will be shielded from any liability. But the trustees will also have an investment consultant that'll be guiding them along the way, not just their plan consultants. But... So some of the other responsibilities, you know, they're going to have, you know, general board decision-making, but they're going to have consulting and legal accounting and investment services to help them along the way. And I'll explain a little bit. I have a graph at the end here to kind of explain a little bit of that. I went through that pretty quickly. But the initial people that have committed to the trust is the North Idaho College has committed, Cootney Health and Leittuck County. They've all passed it, and they will have a representative on the board of trustees. We have a couple other invites out. We didn't go to a bunch of folks. We went to five. And the City of Moscow and City of Post Falls, we have invited them. And we haven't got commitment from City of Moscow or City of Post Falls at this point. But... And just real quick, this is just... Just so you... We had to do some funding projections for the state of Idaho, the Department of Insurance. And so what happens when you become a founding member and you decide to move your employees into the trust, you also move the assets that belong to those employees into the trust. And we will be starting the trust with, you can see, Cootney Health, Leittuck County. North Idaho College currently does not have a true VIBA. They have a different HRA. And so they don't have any balance at this point. And then we have the City of Moscow. So we're going to start with, you know, $6,700,000 in the trust. And the reason I show this graph is that the Department of Insurance wants to know some projections on how it's going to be funded, and then how they plan to pay for all the things that are going to cost money with the trust, like the professional services. And so there really is no upfront cost to the city to even become a founding member. All the trust assets, the way it works today is there's 125 basis points that's charged to the plan, and then they charge $1.25 per employee per month. And so, you know, if you can imagine, the trust over in Washington is, I think it's a half a billion dollars. It's pretty big. And they charge 125 basis points plus $1.25 per employee per month. And where that money goes, we're not real sure. We know it goes to pay for their professional help, but we also think quite a bit goes to their plan consultants, the folks, the Gallagher folks that run it. I put this illustration up here. This will just... This won't happen right away. These people won't come into the trust all at the same time. But I wanted to show that our plan is to keep the fees the exact same. And as the trust grows, the board of trustees will have the authority to lower these fees. Because I think, once you get more into the trust, I don't think it's going to cost 125 basis points and $1.25 per employee per month to run the trust going forward. I think there's a lot of profit built into the one that's in Washington. So anyway, as we start the trust, you'll see we're starting with quite a few employees and dollars to get going. So any questions on that part of it?
Yeah, you want to get the... What, the 125 basis points? What is that again?
That's...
1.25%.
Yeah. 1.25% is how that's calculated. And that's what they charge... That's what you're being charged today with the Washington Trust, the Washington VIBA.
Gary?
Does that cover all costs of running the trust, Chad?
Yes.
So the investment services, accounting services, administration services, everything?
Yes, everything. It's designed to fund... The nice thing about the VIBA for the city is it doesn't cost the city any except for what you fund into the accounts. And then, once it's in there, that cost is bared by the actual member within the plan. So... And that's how it works today.
For me, again. So as you start this IVG, what you're talking about is the... All of these members don't have to come in. They don't even need to send their employees' contributions in there. Although it's up to the employer where those contributions go, correct?
Correct.
As they are the ones who are granting the VIBA, it's by virtue of their status as a public employer that they can grant a VIBA.
Yes.
And so they can designate who is going to administer that VIBA.
Yes.
Okay. But it doesn't cost the city as a governmental entity to run it.
No.
It's just like an investment account, essentially.
Essentially, yeah.
So if Cootney County or Cootney Health decides to switch their VIBA current balance in, then it would cost 1.25 basis points on what they've contributed.
Yes.
And anybody who contributes after that would be the same.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And like we talked about, as the trust gets up and going, and we're a few years into it, and we're able to fund everything, I see the board taking a look at these fees and lowering them. But because we need to... We kind of needed upfront to get things up and going, we decided not to come in with a lower. We just decided to match exactly what the Washington VIBA's doing.
For me. Our discussion that we had, you and I and the mayor had in my office, you also indicated that it's up to the trustees. They could decide whether or not to retain JH Benefits as the consultant or could determine that they want to put it out to RFP and pick someone else, correct?
And maybe I'll show, real quick, this graph. I'm kind of a visual person. So Idaho VIBA Group, what I'm... We're calling IVG right now. The board of trustees, I mean, that is it. That's the entity. JH Benefits, to start with, is the consulting firm, just like Gallagher is today for your Washington VIBA. Oh, does it? Okay. So JH Benefits is just like the Gallagher Group that is the benefits consultant to the trust now. And everything will really run through them. We'll act almost as... We'll act as the consultant and broker as we're going out and choosing in the top right here, CPIC 1 Administration. These are the folks that are going to pay the claims, administer the claims. They're the employee-facing system. They're the online fund management, all those things. And we've already engaged them, but as we get the board of trustees going, they're going to have to approve that we're going to use them to administer. Same with the trust attorney, though. We'll do an RFP-type process to choose an attorney once we get up and going, because Josh, who is attorney for us, I think there'll be a conflict of interest for him to continue to be the trust attorney. Same with the investment consultant, trust auditor. You know, every... We'll cut... JH Benefits works for the trustees to make sure everything happens and all these entities and things are being vetted out. And right now, we're acting kind of on our own, because we're... You need somebody to get it up and going. So we're engaging with Internal Revenue Service and the Idaho Department of Insurance to get all of this approved. I would like to get the board of trustees in place as soon as possible so that we can start to make, you know, decisions and things going forward. Because things we're doing now, we're doing it without, you know, board approval, basically. But some of it has to be done, so...
So should we decide to move forward with this? I guess my biggest question is, the transition for the employee is going to be, you know, is that going to be pretty much invisible? Or, I mean, I realize they're going to have to trade in whatever card they get now for their Peak card. We do... My employer deals with Peak right now.
Okay.
So, you know, you have your HRA card that you're going to have to go trade out, whatever, and account numbers. But other than that, everything will be pretty much invisible to the employee?
Yeah. I think, so for the most part, yes. But I never like to blanket that, because, you know, when we do a transition, there'll be a little bit of a blackout period, which we haven't really decided that. That just means a week where you can't submit claims. And we would bring folks in here and educate the city employees on the new portal, you know, how to log in, you know, all of that kind of stuff. And the city currently uses Peak 1 to administer their flexible spending account. So they're used to Peak 1.
It's not entirely new, then?
No. And we had that same transition blackout for... Our transition from Manly Services to Peak 1, which was accomplished last summer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Gary, do you know, what's the current fee to administer this program as it exists now with the city?
125 basis points.
It's the same.
Yeah. And again, it's no cost to the city. We choose the administrator, but like with our Manly account or Peak 1 account now, it goes to that... The employees' funds go to that account, and then they're administered at a cost to the employee.
Does it have the $1.25 per employee charge on it as well?
Yep.
Yeah, I think, from our discussion, I think the same fees are just being reflected as carrying over with the hope that, as economies of scales are realized, that they... The board of trustees, being an Idaho board, will look at Idaho's needs and maybe decide, you know, we don't really need this 125. Maybe we could do less. It may never come down, but it's one of those things, just to get some more local control.
If this is successful and basically all the public entities in the state of Idaho participated, then the fund would be, obviously, in the billions, then the 125 basis points is probably way too high, like he would suggest. And we probably could... The employees could see an economy of scale that would lower their expense for this. Isn't that the general benefit of this whole idea?
Yeah. And that, really, the same thing that was done with the ICRA program back in the '80s was, you couldn't get liability insurance from commercial brokers or commercial, regular insurance companies. So they decided to form one themselves. And actually, for a while, we're offering premiums that were less than you could get from commercial houses at that time. So it just served a need.
So I'm assuming you guys... You and the mayor have visited with Chad about this prior, as our HR director has looked into it as well, or...
Mark's been advised, but we haven't had the city attorney review it yet, nor have we had HR review it in detail yet. That will go on. We didn't want to go through that process without... I mean, basically, it's set up exactly as the program we have now. So we will need to do that yet.
Mr. Mayor, you have something to add here?
Yes, I do. The initial meeting that Gary and I had with these folks was just that. It was just an initial meeting. This is what we do. This is how it is. And so you guys are getting exactly what we basically received, and it has not been any further than that, because Gary wanted to bring it in front of our council first to kind of see if this was an idea that made sense. So to me, the... It seems to me, the benefit is, it'll be in our Idaho VIBA rather than a Washington one, and it's a little bit more controllable. We have people that are... bit more controllable. If we have people that are, that are trustees in our state and, and kind of locally between here and Leito County and Post Falls, or whoever, you know, else, it gives us a little bit better control, in my view. But, and it, and who knows, until you get going on that, whether that cost will calm down or not, you just don't really know that for sure until you get into it and see how the thing works out, Jim. But as you had stated earlier, the more people that get on in the state, well, that should drive costs down, because there's more money going into it.
Yeah, again, the issue is the intergovernmental agreement, which we've not seen yet, so I'll have to take a look at that. The fact that there is no pitch that you have to bring, you have to choose this trust as being the manager or the administrator of the funds, you don't have to switch over from what we are today, is enticing to me, because we can see how it works a little bit and then make our decision. The intergovernmental agreement, of course, is something that, as Chad indicated, you need in order for governments to work together. And since we haven't seen that yet, we'll need to take a peek at that as well.
Yeah, Jim, I guess then, really, right now, we're just receiving this presentation. We're, we're not taking any action other than giving you guys some direction. I would say that, you know, at this point, we, I'd like to see Legal and, and HR, you know, really look at this and I guess, see what this intergovernmental agreement's going to look like. I mean, I would imagine it would be something close to what ICRA was when it started.
I would think so.
So, you know, Rod should be able to get through that pretty easy. So that's, that's what I would say right now, that we just present that direction. And I guess, how long? Two weeks, a month? You know, when, when do you think you bring this?
Well, it all depends.
Come back to committee and then to council, then.
Yeah. Chad, is the intergovernmental agreement already drafted and approved by?
It's at the Department of Insurance right now.
Okay.
So, they have, so the next steps, they're gonna, they're gonna, at some point, they're going to want us to put in the founding members. They're going to want us to list who the board trustees is. So whoever that representative is, if from, from the city, then there's a little bit of, there's another process that takes place with the state. So we're going to hit that at some point here. We're hoping to have all that completed and done by the end of March. So that we're ready to start bringing employers on. NIC wants to come on July 1. And I see...
It's their fiscal year, so.
Yeah, I see a staggered approach. You know, I see even, I, I don't see everybody coming on at once. I see kind of a staggered approach. And, and really, I'll just reiterate a little bit that by, by appointing somebody to the board, and, and you'll have to look at the, the agreement, but it doesn't, it doesn't make the city be a part of anything or any, any monetary contributions at all. It's just, you're going to have a board, you're going to have somebody on there that's going to help make the decisions and build this, you know, develop this thing.
Whether we participate or not, we, we get to...
I mean, the hope is that you would participate, because you have somebody on the board. But having somebody on the board, they're going to be able to mold this thing to, you know, I mean, it's going, you know, with how they want it, so.
If I may. So the intergovernmental agreement is a precursor to serving on the board, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's the, that's really the issue, and that's what I want Legal, Legal's opinion on, is that, okay, if the council agrees that they want to be part of it, understand that these are the obligations, if there are any. Since that's the, I guess, the key to getting in.
Right.
That would be the thing to do. And then, of course, the decision later on to transfer or designate this group to be managing the city's VIBA, or city employees' VIBA accounts, that's something we could deal with at a later time. And you're thinking about the end of March, you want to get that done?
Yeah, so I just, I put a little bit of a, I really like this picture. I use this a lot down here, because this reminds me of the Palouse. But, um, so we've submitted everything to the Idaho Department of Insurance and the Fed, so they needed, you know, they have, it takes them a while to, to move through these things. They were hoping to have the stuff with the DOI completed by March and the IRS by April. The Feds are ones a little bit of a wildcard for us. So I guess I just talked about that. But, so I think would want to, if, if the city of Moscow would like to be a founding member, you know, I, I would like to see us have that decision by the end of February, if possible, so that we can get those documents completed, get that, that next process. And you guys probably understand what that next process, if my attorney was here, he would know. But there's a, you have to do like a background check on the board, whoever's going to be on the board, and kind of vet that out. So I don't know, we want to have that, a little bit of time, so we're, we hit these timelines.
I'm just checking our schedule.
Well, I would think you would be looking at it, for us, probably, this would come back to this committee, and then be at the next council meeting after that, which would be the first week of March.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know how far back that pushes your timeline, but, and also, I guess, we would, we would have to decide who, who, who would be our designate to this board. I don't know if, if that's an elected official, or if that's an appointee by the, by the council to, you know, of, of a city administrative person, or, or what. So, I mean, I don't know what your other board members, what that is right now.
Yeah.
That's part, part of the intergovernmental agreement, isn't it? Who, who is allowed to be or to be on the board?
Yeah, it, so, so who we have now, like from Cootney Health, it'll be their vice president of HR will be our, and then from Leito County, it'll be one of the, it'll be one of the commissioners, I'm guessing, unless they appoint somebody else. And then at NIC, I think it'll be their vice president of finance, because Joe Dunlap is retiring in June. So I thought he was going to be on the board, but it's probably going to be him to start with. And one of the things I'll just mention, too, is this is all being started in the North. And I don't know if, if there's a little, any rivalry with the South. But we, the way the document reads now is the top five largest are get, get board seats in the future. One of the things that I, I think I talked to, to you guys in, a couple of weeks ago, was redesigning the doc, the, the agreement to where we always have representatives from the North. Because I could see this thing hap, you know, Jim Hammonds is already talking to the state administrator about the state employees coming on to this, and they're going to be a big, they might even be their own separate entity, kind of. But we want to design it so that there's always representative. I would prefer always representative from the North. I mean, there's three from here, three from Ada, and then three from the East, or something like that. So that's another advantage of getting on the board. We can, you can make those changes.
Sure.
Before this thing really gets, gets out there. So.
Okay.
Well, I guess...
I think we should proceed to have Legal and HR look at this and, and vet it out and bring it back to us for approval. And we should proceed in that manner, try to get it at the next council meeting, if that's good with everybody else. I think that probably is something that could save the employees some money on management of their account over time, as this thing gets big enough.
Yeah.
So it's probably a, a good thing.
Okay.
You got, I mean, is that enough direction?
Enough, yeah. We will take a look. I'll talk to Chad, get what documentation we can, and bring those other, bring Legal on and HR as soon as we can.
Okay, proceed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Do you want to pass these out?
If, if you guys, yeah, they're just the slides.
Okay, so moving on, we're down to reports now on the agenda. Gary has a legislative update for us.
Thank you. As you know, as we reported at the last council meeting, we've got, spent some time in Boise. I know that Jim, you and, and John were down there as well. Dan's been watching what the legislature's been doing from afar. So I've got some reports on things that are brewing down there. There are lots of things that are being talked about. It's still really early in the session, so there are still things that are being talked about that haven't made it on the floor yet. So there are a couple, I think I've informed the council about URA issues that are coming up. For instance, one of the issues that is being discussed right now is the bill that has been presented, it was sort of started through the legislature last year and didn't end up getting out of committee to have URAs pay 100% of the cost for telecommunications utilities that needed to be moved because of a URA project. As you know, because of our, the public's ownership of the public rights of way, we have certain abilities to restrict that, extract franchise fees for utilities' use of the public rights of way, and manage how they use those rights of way. One of the rights that cities and counties, state retain for themselves is if the franchising authority, meaning the city, county, or state, tells the utility that we want you to move your, the location of your utilities within the public right-of-way for some public reason, then the, the utility has to do that at their expense. That's part of the, the cost of the privilege of using the right-of-way. That was something that, I don't know if it's the URA furor around the state, that URAs aren't, aren't looked upon with favor in some areas of the state. But the bill moved through last year to have this for all utility providers. This year, it's been limited to telecommunications providers. And some of the things they took out of it were to have that done by, have cities and counties be responsible, just as URAs would be, if they asked telecommunications providers to move their utilities, that the cities, counties, URAs would pay 100% of it. So...
Well, it's not just against URA, not just URAs, it's...
It is just URAs now. Last year, it was not.
Oh, okay.
So they're trying to continue to hone down on it. So this is going through the, I reported to the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency last Thursday about it. The Redevelopment Association of Idaho has sent a letter in opposition of it, and we'll see where it goes from here.
But this hasn't been introduced yet.
It has been introduced, as a matter of fact.
Does it have a number?
Uh, yes, give me half a second here. It is House 404, HB 404. And it's awaiting hearing in the local government committee. As I said, we've been in contact and noted that the state URAs are, are in opposition. And we'll see if we need to weigh in as well as the city. The Association of Idaho Cities has taken a position in opposition as well. And part of that is just because of the parsing out of the, and the limitations on the public right-of-way. Another bill that's winding its way through and is now in Senate Local Government Taxation is a bill to, it's a preemption bill. This is to preempt cities from, and counties from being able to regulate the sale or use of plastic shopping bags within their jurisdictions. Apparently, there was a student, I can't remember where city, what city it was in, but, which one?
Blackfoot.
Blackfoot, that's right. There was a student in Blackfoot, a student movement to get the Blackfoot City Council to restrict the use of plastic garbage can, or garbage bags.
Garbage, grocery bags.
Grocery bags, sorry. The city council did not undertake that and didn't try to regulate it. That was done in Moscow several years ago. Our, I think there was a student group, and then our Sustainable Environment Commission approached the council, asking whether or not their council would consider that. Council said, no, we don't want to do that. We think that's a restriction on private enterprise. But we would encourage you to go out and educate retailers and see if there's a way you could get folks to reduce that. Apparently, that is enough. The Blackfoot situation, which was this last year, is enough that the Idaho legislature felt that they need to respond to it. Apparently, there is a plastic shopping bag manufacturer located in Jerome County that produces, what I've been told, is around two-thirds of the plastic shopping bags in the United States. So they think it could have some effect on their business. So at any rate, it went through the House Local Government Committee and has since passed the House, and it's in the Senate Local Government Taxation Committee.
This is essentially banning, the banning of the use of...
Yes, restricting the city's authority to regulate the use of plastic shopping bags within the city limits.
All right, can I go back to your first bill about the IRA, or the URAs and the utilities? So a local example of that would be when we put the turn lane at Six and Jackson, and things have to be moved there, then if that would pass, then the URA would be responsible for any telecommunications reroute that would happen there?
Not the turn lane itself. The turn lane itself is at the behest of the city. The city will have to obtain property from the URA to do that. So that's a city project. So the city has the authority to tell Avista, or whoever, Frontier Communications, to move your utilities. It's a city project. Now, if the URA came through and said, we're going to do something else there, and because of our project itself, not because of the turn lane, we want you to remove the utilities, then this would kick in. Because it is a URA project, then the URA would have to pay 100% of those relocation costs.
Right. Thank you for the clarification on that.
Okay, so likely, I've talked to the mayor. We're prepared to send a letter in opposition to the Senate Local Government Taxation Committee, opposing the ban. Not necessarily that, I mean, the council years ago said, we're not really interested in imposing this local regulation. However, it's a more eroding of the city's local government's authority by the state for a very narrow issue. And, you know, it's one of those things, I think, people feel that, we keep preaching in Idaho that the government locus, closest to the people makes the best regulations, yet the state keeps stepping in and saying, no, we're going to make these regulations, or we're going to tell you, you can't regulate.
Well, and, and what's the next one? You know, the next regulation that they'll limit on, you know, we, we've had, we went through the whole daycare stuff here a couple of years ago, and I don't even know if that's still running, but, you know, what, what's the next regulation that we're going to have to deal with?
Precisely.
We're not going to be allowed to...
Or we're not going to be allowed to deal with, yeah.
A couple of the two different ones, or the two most troubling ones at this point that actually are before the legislature, there is House Bill 448, which is another restriction on the ability of cities to kind of guide their own financial futures. As you know, there's a limitation in the state of Idaho that you can only raise property taxes 3% over the previous year's levy. So that's an absolute limitation, unless you have a bond or something that's voted on by the people. The vote, of course, is 66.23%. So it's a pretty high bar to jump over. Lots of cities and counties have not taken their 3%. For whatever reason, maybe they have a lot of economic expansion, maybe you have a town that's going through some lean times from an employment standpoint. So as a matter of kind of helping out the populace, everybody tightens their belt. City of Moscow, for instance, had about just over half a million dollars in, in a forgone amount, which we utilized a couple of years ago to fund some backfilled police positions that had previously been funded with grant funds for three years, and to assist in the payment of an obligation toward the airport realignment project. So currently, I'm not sure exactly, I'd have to check on how much forgone amount we've got. But essentially, the forgone amount accumulates. So if every year you don't take the 3%, it will accumulate 3%, 3%, 3%. And if you don't use it for five years, you're going to have 15% that you could levy at any time at the discretion of the city council. Most places don't do that, because that would be a huge hit to their population in one year. Political suicide, perhaps, in some places. But it's always been a local decision. Maybe 10 years ago, there was some discussion about, maybe we shouldn't allow local taxing entities to go back and pick that up. Essentially, what was said at that time is, look, it's 3%, let's leave it alone. People seem to be managing it well. Now you've got some jurisdictions that have quite a bit of forgone amount, and the state, again, is looking to step in and limit that amount. There are different versions, amendments, discussions that are going on. What exactly does that mean? Does that mean you lose it all? No, what it means is there may be some of it that is lost. The bulk of it might still be available, but you would have to have some special processes for accessing it. You'd have to have a public hearing if you ever hope, if you ever decide to access the forgone amount. And that, of course, isn't a huge issue. There's a public hearing for the budget every year. This would be something separate. So those things are going on. Again, it's one of those things that there isn't a movement to limit the amount at this point. It's to limit the process. So again, it's one of those things So, again, it's one of those things that there was a budget that was passed every year that it was forgone. There's a budget that's passed in order to access it. So, and all of those are pursuant to a public hearing and an ordinance that needs to be passed. What's the necessity of having another public hearing requirement? So, anyway, that's winning its way through the legislature as well. So, with that, those are the big ones right now. There is one other bill, House, or Senate Bill 1245, talking about the way you calculate condemnation value or eminent domain value. In some places, you take the value based on a certain point in time. As appraisals are done, sometimes it takes into account the highest and best use. If the project goes in, does that affect the value of the property, so on and so forth? So, essentially, what they want to do is that in a condemnation proceeding, it may not include that speculative value that the project would add to it. So, again, it's one of those things hoping to, to make more accurate the, the valuation of land in an eminent domain proceeding. Now, there are a bunch of other bills that are being discussed, but we'll know more when they get in. One of them was the Seat Belt Primacy Bill that you heard about the other day and that is the, to, it's putting, put forward by the Meridian Youth Mayor's, Mayor's Youth Council. The, because of the teenage deaths that are occasioned by lack of seat belts used, or at least that may be a factor, they've got some draft legislation that may, if it passes, would make an officer's authority such that you could stop someone for not wearing a seatbelt if you had reason to believe that person was under the age of 18 years. Right now, it's a secondary violation that an officer may not stop you because he observes you not wearing a seatbelt. If you get stopped for other reason, that can be an added charge. And I think it's a, I can't remember, what's the value of the fine, Rod?
$250 or something.
On the seatbelt, it's $10.
$10.
I paid it.
Yeah, so it's, it's just meant to be a, kind of a, make you aware type situation. The Meridian Youth Council feels that they would like to make it primary because they think that it would have a factor in helping stop teens' deaths in car accidents. So, that's what's happening in the legislature so far.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, we have another report from Kathleen Burns on the Year-End Farmer's Market.
First, I gotta find it, so hang on.
Chad, you want to help with that?
See X up in the corner, Kathleen?
There we go. Thanks. Have you got yours out? Okay, great. So, this is on the happy side, okay? So, little colorful side. I made you guys hard copies just to follow along.
Thank you.
There's a lot of numbers in here and it might make it easier.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, just to get started, we developed this format a couple of years ago just to give you a, just a grounding of what's happening in the market. So, this is your 2015 report. The first one I'd like to mention is the partnerships and sponsors. All the different agencies that are listed help out quite a bit with the market. And, you know, I can go down there, but New St. Andrews is still supplying restrooms. The Chamber of Commerce has been doing some storage for us and helps with answering phone calls. And the Heal Grant came from the region's Blue Shield Foundation. The U of I Extension helps with backyard gardeners, master gardeners, small farms. The Moscow Pullman Daily News puts our press releases in the newspaper every week so everybody knows what's going on. We work with Inland Northwest Broadcasting, Downtown Moscow Businesses, the Farmer's Market Commission, and then local radio stations, also Backyard Harvest, who facilitates our EBT, and then our AmeriCorps. So, I would like to highlight Bill right away. We were voted the number one market in the state of Idaho for the fifth year in a row by American Farmland Trust, which is a national Washington DC group. And we were rated as one of the top 25 markets in the nation. And you can look at, this is the public voting on their market and the areas that they vote on is people's choice, focus on farmers, healthy food for all, pillar of the community, and champion for the environment. So, thanks to Bill, we handed out 100 cupcakes with the letter, or the number one on them. Thanks to Gritman Medical Center for making the cupcakes. And then the next thing I want to bring up, this is a High Five Passport Program that we had kids participate in with the grant from the region's Blue Shield. And these are some of your numbers for participation. Total was 1,324. This was a voluntary thing for parents to do. There wasn't a mandatory registration process, but we saw a lot of repeated kids coming to the, the city tent for cooking classes, physical activity. We gave them stickers for biking or walking to the market and kids love stickers, so it was pretty popular. And then with the Heal Grant, these were the volunteers that helped with the Heal Grant and these were non-paid professionals in our community that contributed. And you can see their names listed there. We had dieticians from University of Idaho campus to help out. And the previous summer, we had some help from Gritman Medical Center as well. So, this is an hours rate on the bottom. I always include this because it's really important to remember the value of volunteers. On a national average, they're rated at $22.55 an hour, but here in Idaho, that rating is $19.92. So, we researched that because our volunteers are really important. So, we started keeping track of a day sheet at the market just to capture more numbers of who was coming to the market, who are our people, what's the integration of your community into the market, and just keeping track of different incidents in the market. We had over 276 musicians perform in the market throughout the season, whether it was non-paid performers, paid performers, music buskers, you know, an array of musicians. We occupied 1,241 season vendor slots. That's in the calendar six months. We had 525 walk-ons in full spots, 152 vendors in shared spots for walk-ons. Tables, a perfect example of a walk-on table was David Pierce selling his plants or Stu Scott selling his glass pieces. So, walk-on tables are pretty popular. Child vendors, we had 51. Performance art vendors, 119. We started keeping track of who's on the speaker's wall and we have all this data of who's who on the speaker's wall. Did you have a question, Dan?
So, those total numbers, that you could have had, that's added up over the year for the walk-ons?
Yep, six months.
But you had 1,241, that's, that's...
Season vendors coming occupying spaces. It's a unit of space. It's, we only have like 62 season vendors, but we count how many times they come. For instance, Tonamakers doesn't come till the second or third week of June.
But they've got a space for, they do it for the season just because they know.
Right. But instead of doing 62 times, some vendors have one booth, some vendors have three booths. Instead of giving them a blanket number times 26 weeks, we actually broke it down to when they come.
Okay.
So, that's where you get that number.
Thank you.
Yep. And the speaker's wall, that's an array of people up there.
And that's total over the year as well?
Yep, mhm.
And there might be three one weekend, there might be seven the next.
Right. And there's, we kept track of all the different groups that attend the speaker's wall and it's, it's quite a variety, from people selling tickets for plays to quilts to giving out messages from different churches and faith to the Peace Coalition. It's a real variety of people that are on the speaker's wall. We redirected 125 dogs.
What was more difficult to redirect, the smokers or the dogs?
I would say the smokers because they actually talk back.
Well, and again, that is, did you have any repeat dogs that had to be redirected?
Not really. It's like, the hardest part about the dogs is if you're coming from, you're coming into town from out of area and you have a small animal that is in your purse.
A service iguana?
Yeah, your service iguana. That's, yeah, that's correct. And coming in from and out, outside the area, it's, we had a script to talk to people and directed them to the east side sidewalk, so. Lost and found items, we, that's really not too bad, 45. We've had everything from keys, cell phones, wallets, money, and we see the police every day after the market to deliver those lost and found items. I kind of did the highlights here because we do have problems with electrical on Front of Square. We've kind of maxed it out to what it was initially installed for. So, these are the days when we really had problems and the power went down. You can see where it was in the beginning of the season, so after a while, we started saying, no, you only get one cord. You know, we had to try and balance it out. Thankfully, we never lost power to the musicians. You know, they were always on a separate circuit, so that worked out pretty good because that could be pretty bad. So, we did have poor air quality with the fires. On August 29th, we thought about canceling the market, but we've never canceled a market. We had some vendors that canceled for their health. We...
Couldn't see from one end of the street to the other.
You couldn't, but we had vendors that were like, no, no, I got a plan. And so, we went with it.
Still pretty well attended.
It was. So, it was kind of shocking. We keep track of the police bathroom because we really need it and we had one day where it wasn't open and it wasn't in working order. We had four incidents of 26 weekends, 27 of lost kids. And the good thing about that is we had the kid. So, we, it, there, we usually just keep them in the city tent, give them a strawberry lemonade from Patty's Kitchen across the street and hang onto them, call the cops. And so, that's really not too bad because we tend to find the parents pretty quick.
Actually, four incidents in six months with that many people involved, there are a lot of places would like it that low.
Yeah, it's, yep. And, yeah, it works out pretty good. The system that we have in place works out pretty good. We did have three medical injuries this past season. I think we had two trips with the ambulance, one non-ambulance. One wasn't in the market, but we called anyway on it. So, that worked out pretty good. When you get into the music and the performances, you have 27 market days. You have two different time slots, 9:30 to 10:30 and then 11:30 to 1:00. When we kind of approximate how many people are in the non-paid slots, it's about 200, it's about 100 performers. When we go into the 26 paid slots, it doubles because we tend to book the bigger bands in the second slot. And that was a change this year because we booked the bigger bands to the larger crowd, which was good for the band and good for the crowd. Here you have a photograph of the Tai Chi. This was with the University of Idaho Confucius Institute and it became pretty popular as the market went on, where we opened up the market the first day out or day of the month with Tai Chi. And that was actually pretty fun. How is this out of order? Well, these are some of your volunteer programs in the market. You have the city commissions that participate in the market, the High Five Kids Program, the chefs at the market, the U of I Extension and Master Gardeners, Leita County Human Rights Day, Idaho Fish and Game, Migratory Bird Day, the Great Moscow Food Drive, Canine Companions. So, Jessica Briarly, our new AmeriCorps member, is downstairs and she's quite busy with scheduling all of these events in the market. And she's been working on them since 1st of October. The marketing dollars, you can kind of look at that. The cost has really gone down because the number one cost in 2014 was the over-the-street banner production. And that was quite pricey to install and order the two-sided banners. 15, the price went way down. So, the total price in 2015 was $1,586. A main cost is doing some ads that are specific to the Leita Eagle, Home and Harvest Magazine, the production of the posters with the poster contests that we do. But still, that's relatively low advertising for an event that's six months running. And the reason why is the next slide, and this is all DJ's work with a little help of the AmeriCorps and the market manager. And also Zach, who's behind the scenes right now, has been really helpful with the Twitter and the Facebook posts on Saturday. And our Facebook is tied to the Twitter and the Twitter tied to the Facebook. So, when they go to the market, they post what's new in the market, you know, if it's the first day of strawberries, first day of corn, whatever, they're on it. And then they post the music and it's been really good. This is more like your word of mouth and it's been very productive and very low cost other than time for the market management, management to work uploading things. Did you have a question, John?
No.
Okay. So, let's keep going. So, these were the two craft and food juries that we did and they were held right in this room. Several people in this room had to do taste and testing. Gina's one of them. So, on March 27, we had 31 participants, one no-show, six jurists. June 19, 23 participants, six none, now, no-shows, sorry about that one, there's a typo, and six jurists. So, we're setting up our jury for March again and we have a list that's running downstairs and we have our arts and crafts application that's out. So, people are starting to ask. And one thing we're going to do this, this year that's going to be different is in March, we're going to have an evening event here on how to be a vendor to kind of answer questions for people that have thought about it but don't really know how to get in. This is a new rulemaking that was done. I don't know if you remember, but we had, the state of Idaho was here for several meetings with Idaho Department of Health and Welfare and we hosted the public meetings here. And I have the rule number and the legislative number. And this was just discussed and passed on January 27th and 28th. And really, all it means to us is administrative, administrators of markets, is we have new paper trail for food with our health department. And it kind of defines low-risk food versus high-risk food. It makes it a little easier for our local health workers. And then it also unifies the code in Idaho between all health departments, which is really good because we've had a little discrepancy between different locations in the state and how they interpret the code. So, this clarified the code. So, this is where I want to get to the commission. Your commission was formed in May 2013. On the left, you see the current makeup of our commission members. We actually just filled the vacant position with a man known Berto, I forget his last name.
The Royal.
Yeah, thank you. And so, this, what your commission members do, they do farm and tour sites. They help with subcommittees, which is policy, agriculture, marketing, music, and craft. They do volunteering onsite at the market, whether it's survey work, information gathering. They assist with U of I homecoming, year-end sales report, cooking demos, all kinds of things. The meetings that have been tracked so far were, were 12... The meetings that have been tracked so far were, were 12 meetings, two hours per meeting, that's 192 volunteer hours. And again, I put the national average and your value to a volunteer in Idaho at the bottom there, because this is all volunteer hours. Next, we had our annual vendor site visits. These get kinda compli, complicated, but Dr. Pierce is pretty good about this, and as you can see, we went all the way to Stanford, Oregon, Wapato, Washington, Wapato, Royal City, and then the honey vendors there, Woodland Apiaries right here in Moscow, Idaho. So, these are just a small snippet photographs of farms, but we did four farms in one day, which was pretty amazing, and then we separated out for bee people on another day. But it's always fascinating to see what's actually growing, and to match up their application with their growth, and, and what they have in the ground, to make sure they're, and all their licenses and permits and everything coming off the farm. So, it's just a double check. The Manage My Market software system that we purchased in 2012, it really bloomed this year, being 2015, it was mandatory to use it for all vendors. We've kinda been cobbling vendors through a software program and getting to less paper. It's been a little bit of a project, but DJ's had a lot of one-on-ones on vendors, and now they're all up in the system, except for new vendors coming in. And then if vendors have a new product, they have to either jury the product, depending on what it is, or just enter it in the system. So, this just gives you stats and numbers on how many tax reforms we processed, release and hold harmless, food risk assessments, the variety of vendors that have submitted applications, ones that are pending, some had been denied. So, the program's pretty good at developing an interactive map, doing a product search, they can do background reports off of the system, aggregating numbers, yep.
What would cause you to deny an application?
If they don't have all their permits in, or their inspections in, or they don't have their paperwork in.
Okay.
We don't let anybody come to market unless their ST124s are in, their release and hold harmless, which protects us from the city.
So, they're ready?
They're ready.
And if they're, if they're not ready, they're not coming in?
No. We say no a lot, so, but we help them get their paperwork in, but if they don't get their paperwork in-
They don't do it.
They can't vend.
Yeah.
Right. So, this is our stopgap. This is a really good software program that assists us with keeping all of this compartmentalized, because the, the codes change every year, the laws change every year, and a lot of things have to be uploaded to the system, and it's really good for that. So, this is your breakdown of your snapshot of who's in the market and what are the percentages. The good thing is, is we actually run a farmer's market, because our highest numbers for season and walk-on are produce and nursery. They're not another form of product. They're actually a farm-based agricultural product. So, then you go down into value-added, which is your cheeses, your breads, your jams, your jellies, you know, pickled beets, things like that, and then your hot prepared foods, and then the bottom of that is your craft. And you can see, we have a large percentage of walk-on craft that are not season vendors. This is a sad day, but our market manager, Barry, is not returning. Five years is a lot for him, and he's going on to grad school and running two businesses. So, we do have his job description and announcement is out there, so we'll be filling a new position this year and training a new market manager. The good news is, is Barry's offered to stay, vet applications, help with interview panel, and then train the first two days of market. So, that's really good, but he's given us a lot of really good years, and he's really helped with the transfer from the parking lot to Main Street, which has been a big, big doing. These are your breakdown numbers of your EBT, electronic benefit transfer, otherwise known as food stamps. You can go from year to year, your 13, 14, 15. We've kinda seen a drop in usage, as you can see. Last year, we didn't mail out the postcards to all the households that received EBT benefits in Leita County, because we did not have access to the address labels. And in previous years, we have gotten access to those address labels from the Health and Welfare, but this last year, we did not receive that. So, you can see, it went down about $500 or so. We did collect over 1,000 pounds worth of produce, which is collected the day at the market, and then all that produce goes to the food bank and gets distributed.
So, Backyard Harvest takes what the vendors decide, "We're, we're not selling."
Right.
And then that, that goes to the food bank?
Yep. So, at the end of the day on Saturday, we have boxes at the city tent, you know, and a lot of zucchini, lettuce. It's great, though.
I've always heard if you, if you don't have zucchini, you don't have very many friends.
That, that's true, Dan. That's very true. So, here's your fee breakdown, who paid what and how much. So, the total fees we collected, which is your revenue stream, was $45,487. It breaks down to season vendors paying $22,137, walk-on vendors paying $23,350.25, and these are fees based on corner spaces, walk-on vendor booth spaces, truck spaces, kids spaces, performance art spaces, the list goes on, on how the fees are broken down. And then here's your sales reporting, and how the sales were reported this year. And again, this is a paper trail that we aggregate, and we break it down into season vendors and produce, walk-on vendors and produce, craft, walk-on vendors and, with craft, season food, and walk-on vendors with food.
Are you just getting better reporting is why that walk-on number is, you know, three times as much there this year, rather than-
I think so.
Than the actual amount?
Yeah.
I mean, I can see the other increases make sense, but that's a big jump there.
It is. And I think we ran through a lot more walk-ons this year.
Oh, that, that-
Yeah. And I think for, the goal for 2016 is, the Manage My Market software program has a reporting tool. So, instead of us aggregating paper and numbers, you know, they could easily enter it into their, the software program, where they're already registered. So, that might help us get better numbers, too, with utilizing the tool that we have in place. So, since we charge tax on food, DJ did the, the estimated numbers, and you would assume that that's $70,643 in state of Idaho tax revenue from the event.
We don't get that.
No, John?
Very little.
Little bit, little bit.
Little bit, John, little bit, John. That might be another trip to Boise. So, here's your recap of expenses, and this is your revenue at the top, which was about $5,000 more than 14, $45,487.25. Our staff expenses, and that includes my expenses, DJ's expenses are broken out, every payroll, and how much time she gives to the market, the market manager, the market laborer, and so that's our staff expenses right there. And then our program expenses, we have a line item, and that's our program expenses for buying tables, tents, chairs, whatever we're needing in the market. And then you go into police, about 1,400, their numbers actually went down, because they towed less cars, which is pretty good. The water department estimates about $200 in working on that drinking fountain, and the other drinking fountain in the parking lot. Engineering, they do a lot of blueprinting for us, mapping for us, some oversized banners for number one in the state of Idaho, so we buy ink cartridge over there. Park and rec support is about 1,700, maybe up and down, but that's our garbage guys that are on the city park system for Saturdays, it's just not the market, but they're around the city. And then the street department, I checked with Tyler today, these numbers are pretty much ballparked on the cost of the man-hours to sweeping the street. And fire department, this is a pretty rough guesstimate of 525, that's for onsite inspections. Joe has to come in and inspect table weights, or tent weights, and then fire extinguishers, and open cooking, and tent coverings, make sure they're fire protectant, tent coverings, there's a lot of inspection that has to happen. So, those are his hours and time. And then we have two contracts with the market. One is with Backyard Harvest, which is $1,500 to facilitate the EBT, and the remaining balance of that is the full-time AmeriCorps position for the market, which is a year-round position. So, then that kinda breaks it down a little bit to the indirect cost of $13,760, pretty close to the year before. But then you start seeing, as you drop in, the city expenses, direct and indirect, we start dropping down. So, your subsidy, your subsidization for the market is down to about $17,954.
That's 63,441, includes that, all your indirect costs, right?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep. So, that's your big number there. And we left the 13 and 14 up, so you can look at trends, you can kinda see which way we're going, how we're raising our revenue, but we're going down in expenses, or saying, trying to stay the same with expenses, you know, and not incurring more cost. So, these are the services that the different city departments provide, and I leave this up here, because we're not the only ones answering the phone when people call into the city, and different departments in the city provide a lot of resources, like the policy development is in legal, any procedural forms, the waivers and things like that come out of legal. The police, you know, they're up all night the night before. Water department helps with gray water and the water. Engineering, again, they do a lot of really great mapping over there, Carrie and Kevin and those guys. And then up on the third floor, they're all, always doing notary, answering phones. Park and rec is really helpful with their day guys, and helping us out with electrical maintenance on Front Street Square. Street department keeps it kinda clean. Fire department, the safety inspections are really very valuable. They're very important anytime you have open cooking. And then the arts department, we just do about everything else. So, that just kinda shows you what we got going on down there. So, I'm just gonna give you a little brief history here. This was your 2015 poster contest, that was Rob McPherson, he's the art teacher for Pullman High School. And we're gonna be sending out the poster contest again here within about two weeks. And then the third-place winner was a graphic arts student from, that was from WSU, Carrie Lynn Kaiser, was a really popular one. Mario Montes, he was on the Moscow Arts Commission, and a graphic artist from the University of Idaho. And this was Becca Deary, she was a graphic artist from the University of Idaho. We don't have an image of Alison Myers, so kinda missed that one out. This is your Zach Ellis, back there, that's doing the filming right now. He's onboard on Saturdays to do the videography photographs, and he's also the sound technician for all the music. So, Zach's very important. And then these are some Alison Meyer photographs that we have rights to use. So, any questions?
Kathleen, if, if you, if you were to expand the market back into the, you know, keep it on Main Street, but expand back into the Jackson Street parking lot, how many vendors do you think are in the queue that would want, that, how many more vendors could you take on, if you opened that back up?
With current staff load, I'd say none. I'll be real honest, our, our sightlines, our walking distance, our time management for what we do, we do an awful lot with a lot of people with very few people working. So, if we expanded that, we'd have to do a formula to see if the numbers coming in would support more help. But I think you could easily get 30 more vendors down there.
Do you have 30 more in the waiting list, basically?
If we took a lot of people that were walk-ons, and chose to increase the numbers of craft, and chose to increase the number of food, we could easily fill that.
If you, so if you took on 30 more, obviously, there'd be some expenses associated with that, but if it was like, if the additional fees generated, generated like $12,000 or $15,000, it would go a long ways towards eliminating the deficit there, wouldn't it?
It would.
Well, yeah, but it would also increase the cost, 'cause you're gonna have to have
almost double the staff on the Main Street, and then in the parking lot.
Well, I have to have another set of eyes and ears, that's for sure.
Well, more than one.
Yeah. But we also have the, the bathroom construction, so it's not a good idea for this year.
Well, it's not gonna happen this year, obviously.
No. But, and the mark, the Moscow Farmer's Market Commission is looking at fees. They're gonna, we're gonna have a special workshop and look at fees, and how other markets in the state develop their fee system. So, we're gonna be looking at that really closely for the 2017 budget. So, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We have to look at other examples, and how other people rate fees in the state.
Also, was, was there not a study that was being done to see what the other effect on business in Moscow, because of the farmer's market, and how much revenue that might, might generate?
Yeah.
So, not just the direct expenses, but other things that go on in town, at restaurants and stores, and-
Right.
The other shopping and, and revenue that might be generated from that, and how that might be applied to the deficit?
Yeah, Dr. Steve Peterson is working on that now. It was supposed to be done just next week, I believe, but he's working on the airport impact study, and had some other things come up, so we're looking toward the end of February. There's a survey that's supposed to be, being sent out to vendor, or excuse me, to businesses downtown, and that's being finished up and being sent out hopefully this week.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Good. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other business for the good of the order here?
I would move we adjourn.
I second.
Hearing no opposition to that, we'll call this meeting adjourned.